Everything learned from verse one, from chapter one, verse one, chapter two, verse one. Now in chapter three, verse one. Behold, I will send my messengers. Wow, he's still talking to the priest. He telling them, I will send my messenger. He shall prepare the way before me. And the Lord whom you seek shall suddenly come to his temple. Right? Suddenly come to his temple, why? Because remember now, the temple, they were offering the offerings at the temple. Right? Only the priest can offer on the altar at the temple. Okay? Now, this one who they supposed to be seeking, he coming to his temple. He coming to his temple. And guess what? And he don't need you to hit a lecter. He ain't gonna need you to kill him no fire, light, no offering, nothing. Cause he ain't dealing with that. Watch this now. He says, even the messenger of the covenant, whom you delighted, behold, he shall come, said the Lord of hosts, voice two. But, but who may abide the day of the covenant? And who shall stand when he appear it? For he is like a refiner's fire and like fullest soul. And he shall sit as a refiner and a purifier of silver. Watch this now, watch this language. And he shall purify the sons of Levi. Cause they had a problem, cause remember now, these are the ones who became Pharisees. Cause they were still in a priestly life. Okay? Levi was a part of the house of Jacob. Right? They became your high priests, Pharisees, Sadducees, and so forth. Right? Remember now, and they were the ones who, who couldn't handle this review. Who couldn't handle the reducts of the Lord. And the Lord know that they would wanna put him to death. Anyhow, so watch this now. So it says here, and he shall purify the sons of Levi. Watch this, and purge them as gold and silver. How gold and silver is purged? With fire, fire, fire! Watch this. And it says here, they, it says that they may offer unto the Lord an offering in righteousness. Now we know that this was not the case when he was dealing with the Pharisees. Cause he was saying, say, have a no offer. So what is he talking about? This is the ultimate goal. In other words, in, in other words, when you read the book of Ezekiel, I think from Ezekiel, chapter forty, forty-four, and so forth, you will see that in the kingdom, in the kingdom, offerings will be going on. There'll be offerings going on. So this is a prophecy. This is a future statement here. Okay? This is a future, this is what you call the spirit of prophecy. We gotta have the spirit of prophecy. When you got the spirit of prophecy, you will not have an error in your spirit. Cause you got the spirit of prophecy. The spirit of prophecy is set for the time that the Lord has appointed it. And not for the time that I wanna point it. Hell, it's this. I'm not the pointer of, of the, of the times of the Lord. No, okay? Like the, the Lord said to his disciples, it's not for you to know the times of the Lord. It ain't for you to know what he can do, where he can do it. Now watch this now. So it says here, then shall the offering of Judah. Right? Then shall the offering of Jerusalem, Judah and Jerusalem be pleasant. See, the offering was unpleasant. Why? Because he had to bring it to the priest. The priest was messing things up. That's why he gotta purify the sons of Levi. Huh? Why, why? Why did he just won't read all these things? So they could help people to know what this talking about. Now watch this now. So he says here, and it says here, then shall the offering of Judah and Jerusalem be pleasant unto the Lord, as in the days of old and as in former years. Now make you know, the Lord ain't dealing with these offerings. Now, now? Now, now? So this, under a spirit of prophecy. Okay? And it says, and I will come near to you to judgment. And I will be swift, be a swift witness against the sorcerers and against the adulterers, against false swearers, and against those that oppress the hireling in his wages. Very important. He called them, they oppress the hirelings, the people who work for a living. Right? And their wages, that's oppression. That right there, that's it, that, I didn't, I, he call that oppression. Listen, you know, you know this, you gotta go there and work to work with nobody you wanna do. And then you get paid. Then you got these ones, who got the, who got this, uh, who got the honey on their tongue? Uh? They got them smooth saying, smooth words. They come to you with fiend words, like it says in the scripture, fiend words. They make merchandise over you. You're not supposed, that's not supposed to happen. He says, by the sweat of your brow, you will eat bread. That's what he say. Okay? Showing you all those offerings that the priests were in charge of. The Lord, he, he limit none of those offerings. None! Watch this. So he says here, he says here, and against them, against, he didn't say, and with them. He say, against them, those that oppressed the hireling in his wages. Watch this, the widow. Watch this, once again, that's part. See, when they, when they read about the woman who gave her one little mite. She had one little, you know, one little piece of something. She was a widow. Right? And he said to them Pharisees, he seen, he seen, uh, priests. He said, he said to them, um, uh, he, he exposed them by them doing that. And he call that, he call that robbery. Right? That they, what they, what they did. Uh, because if you know the scriptures, a widow is supposed to live off the tithes. A widow is supposed to live off the tithes, man. What you, what you, what you all doing? You got a widow coming to bring her last, her last, what she gotta live off? No, man, that's what you call unconstitutional. So he says here, he says here, the widow and the fatherless, that's another one who's supposed to-
I mean, the offense.
Yeah. And it says, and that turn aside the stranger from his right. Now, watch this now, cause you know, remember, we did, when we did the previous session, we did one of giving. We went to Judah and me, and chapter fifty, and we saw what he say. You're not supposed to turn, alright, from, uh, from thy brother or thy neighbor in terms of this, as related to this. But this, all these things they were practicing. Right? So he says here, and fear not me, said the Lord of hosts. He says, for I, what he said, for I am the Lord, I change not. Therefore, you sons of Jacob are not consumed. Okay? So he says, he say, I am the Lord and I change not. He says, therefore, you sons of Jacob are not consumed. Why? Because he don't change, remember now, there's an oath. The oath is, he swore on the eyebrow. So this is one, this is one of the reasons. So when you hear the Lord say, long suffering, the oath that he made, the oath that he made with Abraham is long suffering. Because he cannot undo, he can't say, no, I, I, I changed my mind from the oath. He can't do it. Okay? He says, I have a lot, I change not. He say, this is why you sons of Jacob means the tabernacle. Right? The tabernacle of Jacob. The tabernacle of Jacob had three tribes, three tribes. Judah, Benjamin, Levi. He says, this is so, he's not talking to the scattered Israel. Right? Cause the house of Israel is already a scattered people. Right? So he saying, this is why you sons of Jacob are not consumed. Alright? For, for seven, even from the days of your fathers, you have gone away from mine ordinances. Now we didn't read that. He didn't tell you who the father was, who's ordinance. He gave it to Levi. He said, he gone away from mine ordinances and have not kept them. He say, return unto me. That means repent. And I will return unto you. That means, and I will repent. Remember, I know if y'all remember, I did a session on what repentance is. Cause a lot of people have a misunderstanding of what repentance is. Okay? When you, when you repent, when you repent, right? You are, you are the one, you are the one who is at the point to, um, to deal with mercy. You're gonna be handling mercy, but in a certain way. When you want mercy, when you want mercy, it's required for you to repent. And when, for you to give mercy, that means that you also must repent. So like here, so why would God have to grant mercy to anyone? Because they were supposed to be put to death. So he had to repent from that. So this is how you get mercy, through repentance. You get no mercy without repentance. You have to repent. And it says, and it repented the Lord that he had made man upon the earth. Right? Repented the Lord that he had made man upon the earth. Why? Because at, at that time, the Lord did not show any mercy, any center flood. Okay? Now watch this, cause I'm gonna change the subject. Right? So he says, voice eight, he says, well, a man robbed God. Now he didn't tell you who the man was, who they was. They were the priests. He says, yet ye have robbed me. What's, what's the tone? You have robbed him, cause what? You did not offer what he had required you to offer. You offered, remember to set the name, right? You offered rip open coffin, all kind of things. Uh, polluted bread? Hell, it's this. Uh, polluted bread? You know? Probably, probably had a eating and all, uh, working on baking that bread and everything later. But watch this. He says, well, a man robbed God, yet ye have robbed me. What you say? Remember the same tune of these same priests? He said, but he say, wherein have we robbed thee? Like how? How you, you know? Cause they, obviously they clever, remember? They always try to see if they can catch Jesus in his saying. How are we robbing? Cause they think they know how robbery goes. They think, oh, you jump through the window, then you take the people things, or you pull a knife on them, then take their money off of them. They select, but they ain't, they ain't got the, uh, they ain't got the, they ain't got the quickness, man. The, this, the word of God is quick and powerful. Shabbat and any two wedges worn. Now watch this now. So he says here, what he say, wherein have we robbed thee? Right? And he says, in tithe and offering. So the Lord has been robbed, tithe and offering. Now watch this. He says here, ye have cursed, he says, ye are cursed by the curse. Now remember in chapter two, he already said that. He already say, I can curse you. On your, see, he say, on your blessings. He say, matter of fact, I have cursed them already. And he says here, he says, ye are cursed by the curse, for ye have robbed me. Watch this, you have robbed me. So God say, you robbed me. Even this whole nation. So you didn't just rob God, you was robbing the whole nation. What nation? The whole nation of Israel? Because Israel was bringing you the offering. You were robbing God, own off the offering that is required. Which means that you were not only robbing God, but you robbed even this whole nation. And it says, bring ye all the tithe into the storehouse. In other words, don't keep none in your little personal farm or your own little personal store place. He say, bring all the tithe into the storehouse that there may be meat in my house. And prove me now, with said, the Lord of hosts, I will not open the windows of heaven and pour you all the blessing that there should not be room enough for you to receive it. Which, and that goes into proof that tithe was natural. Right? The windows of heaven. Huh? Remember? Anyone, anyone, uh, remember? Right? What the, what the windows of heaven were? When you go to, uh, let me get it. Pull it up here. Let me go to Genesis, chapter seven. He's a beautiful man. Scriptures are beautiful. Genesis, chapter seven, right? Chapter seven, and from verse five, and it says, and all did according to all that the Lord had commanded him. And Noah was six hundred years old when the flood of the waters were upon the earth. And Noah went in and his sons and his wife and his sons' wives with him into the ark because of the waters of the flood. Right? Because of the windows of the flood. Now let me jump down, voice ten, and it came to pass after seven days that the waters of the flood were upon the earth. In this, in the six hundred year of Noah's life, in the second month, the seventeen day of the month, the same day, where all the foundations, fountains of the great deep broken up. Watch this, and the windows of heaven were open. So what's coming out of windows of heaven? Water!
Water.
Water! So these corn farmers, right? Cause they oppressed the people, the, the hireling and their wages. So, yeah, the corn farmers. These corn farmers caused people to believe that there is a financial window of heaven. And God would pour you out money, blessings as money. No, he already tell you. See, the priest's lips was acknowledged, and people was see Lord at, at, at their, at their lips. The thing is, the people were supposed to know what we talking about. They supposed to know the language, what is the windows of heaven? So we don't go off in a make believe or nothing like that. No, the windows of heaven is when God goes beyond the clouds. He goes beyond the clouds and the water comes out. Cause remember now, there is water above the firmament, duh, Genesis, chapter one. So he wasn't just relying on the forty days. He wasn't just relying on forty days and forty nights of water coming down. Come on! Man, we, we, there's a lot of rain and everything like that. The most of course is some flooding, like small flooding. You know? In lowland areas, you know, it'd be, you know, kind of devastated. But this kind of flood, he said during, during the time of flood, I mean, to cover the mountains. So where you get that water from? Out of water, I, I even covered the, the mountains with water. Uh, if, 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 if the, the water came from a recycling system in the earth, what goes up must come down. Uh, or whatsoever. No, it wasn't here. This what he talking about, the window of heaven. Okay? Now, when you need, uh, when you need the windows of heaven, when, when God would pour out from the windows of heaven, this, this water and everything like that, you'll notice that. This is something that he always does, cause when Genesis, in, in, in Genesis, chapter two, you'll see that, right? That a greatness went up. Right? Right? And it says here, water was coming, uh, into the garden. That's, this, this, this what the garden need. Garden need it, but this water was coming from, uh, from a, on high, the water, that particular garden. This what he talking about when he says, I would do this. If you do this, I would open the windows of heaven. And matter of fact, not from the cloud, I'd open the windows of heaven, send that water to what he across. Your potatoes big like four trucks. Hell, it's this. One potato big like a four truck. You know, no such thing as one, a, a bag of potatoes, no more after that. You're huge? Uh? Uh, yeah, just, 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 just give me half a potato. Matter of fact, half too much. Anyhow, so, just try to show you, that's what the windows of heaven is. Matter of fact, let's go to Genesis, let's flip right over into Genesis, chapter eight. Genesis, chapter eight, from verse one, it says, and God remembered Noah from verse one, and every living thing and all the cattle that was with him in the ark, and God made a way to pass over the earth and the waters are swaged. And it says, and the fountains also of the deep and the windows of heaven were stopped. Now, hold on now, if the windows of heaven is money, don't stop that! Stop the rain, not the windows of heaven! Okay? So we go back to Malachi. Go back to Malachi, Malachi, chapter three. Okay? Things are simple, simple about it. Okay? So in Malachi, he says here, voice ten, bring all the tithe to the storehouse that there may be meat in my house. And prove me now, where heaven, said the Lord of hosts, if I will not open you the windows of heaven and pour you out a blessing that there should not be room enough to receive it. Right? Remember I tell you? Okay, watch this now. Watch this. So take a look at this. Right? There'll be so much food on the earth. What are you talking about? So much food on the earth, you can't even, it like it is not, not sufficient storehouses to, to receive it. Like right now, you know, they, they got all kind of food them pack up inside, like factories and so forth and everything like that. I have it here? Oh. Hold on one second. Put my charger. I'm probably gonna laugh at me. One second. Alright. I can see y'all better, thanks. Good, good. Okay, so we back in business. Alright, so. Alright, so, he says, think about this now, think about this. Right? No room to receive here. Right? Talking about these blessings. I might tell you. Right? And, and, and it ain't like, on this earth, like, like, the earth is not capable of, of producing like enormous, um, things. I mean, it can't, you know, it only can, so. There's something that, there's something that the Lord is capable of. You understand? So today, we stuck with these little, you know, like, we stuck with eating. Like, let me just say this, like, like gold, like, you know, like I used to have goldfish in the fish tank. Like we stuck with eating goldfish. Like, you know, when, like, when we eat snapper, they, uh, you call that fish? Back of my mind? Don't mind if people talking about plate size. No, we, you know, we eating table size, table size fish. Uh, tables, how about that? How about a table size fish? Not no plate size fish. They go, oh, that's a big fish, plate size fish. How big is your plate? You mean that little plate? You go, you go on that plate? Come on, man. How about, how about altar size fish? Uh, how about that? The altar is a plate. The Lord has a plate. That's all, uh, altar size fish. Come on. Anyhow, so he said that you would not have room enough to receive it. Right? So that means, you would either have a lot of it, or they will be big. A lot of it and big. Now watch this. He says, and I will rebuke the devourer for your sakes. Who's the devourer again? He said, I'll rebuke the devourer for your sakes. Remember? He already said it. He says, right? That he can, he's a refiner. And he's gonna, what he's gonna do to the sons of Levi? He can purge them. Right? He says, and I will rebuke the devourer for your sake. And he shall not destroy the fruit of your ground, neither shall your vine cast a fruit before the time in the field, said the Lord of hosts. And all nations shall call you blessed. Now, of course, this hasn't happened as yet. Cause we haven't recorded this. There's no, there's no historical record that anywhere, uh, the people that are called blessed as a result of this. Okay? The devourer, um, it says, and it says, and he shall, uh, it says, rebuke the devourer for your sake, and he shall not destroy the fruit of your ground. Right? Neither shall your vine cast a fruit before the time in the field. Right? And so forth. And it says here, and all nations shall call you blessed. Right? Which nation it is on the planet that all nation is calling blessed? Right? It says, for ye shall be a delight some land, said the Lord of hosts. Your words have been stout against me, said the Lord, yet ye say, what have we spoken so much against it? He says, ye have said, it is vain to serve God. And what profit is it that we have kept his ordinance and that we have walked, uh, mournfully before the Lord of hosts? And now we call the proud happy, yea. They that worked wickedness are set up, yea. They that tempt God are even delivered. Right? Hey, hey, you see, a lot of these things going on. He says, they're the work wickedness, they, they, they don't want to get himself. They getting all the hookups. Anyhow, voice sixteen, in book of Malachi, chapter three, it says, then, they that feared the Lord spake often one to another, and the law heard it, and heard it, and a book of remembrance was written before him for them that feared the Lord, and that tore upon his name. They shall be mine, said the Lord of hosts, in that day, when I make all my jewels, and I will spare them as a man spared his own son that served him. Right? It says, then shall you return and discern between the righteous and the wicked, between him that served God and him that served no God. Okay? So forth. Alright, so, um, that was a, a look into, uh, into tithing. Right? Because once again, uh, many persons are under, uh, this hypnosis of what, what tithing, um, actually is. And whether tithing is still in effect, yes or no. Uh, for the most part, people who, uh, who give tithe, uh, they give tithe based upon, uh, the way they were coerced, uh, by misunderstanding scripture into, into th- uh, into tithing. Uh, but yet they don't have the slightest clue about, uh, what this is all about. And, and so forth. That's why when you see the real high priest came on the scene, he was not oppressing the, the hireling That's why when you see the real high priest came on the scene, he was not oppressing the, the hiring of their wages. He, 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 he wasn't doing any, any of that stuff, or whatever, okay? That's why, we gotta understand, uh, what it is that the Lord requires, okay? The Lord requires willful, he wants the willful offering, he wants the cheerful offering, he wants to give up, to be excited about giving, and things like that. This is what, this is what it is, okay? Um, and so that, that's, that's what it is, but not, not the, uh, not the thing that they converted um, to, um, people claiming that they are, are paying, uh, tithe uh, from their hard work, from their, uh, from the work that they put, and, and so forth, okay? That, that is not what he was talking about, ob- obviously you can see, uh, from the scripture. Right, that, that's not what he was talking about, but. Does anybody have a question, I know, um, many of you came in, um, um, you know, late, and so you may not have, uh, caught it from the, from the beginning, from a point of substance and so forth. But does, uh, anyone have a question, anyone has a comment? No question, no comment, no nothing, nothing? Somebody gotta have something, somebody gotta have a comment. Someone gotta have something, come on, come on, something, talk something up there.
Well, now the foot's up inside the chat, you can check the chat, but, um. I didn't like that scripture what you put there with the, when you read that the wages that you were pressing, it's like, boy, they don't, they like, they like tell you that as if your boss, who ain't paying you, like if you wait for someone and they ain't paying you what you deserve, they like tell you that, that's, that scripture, that scripture for them. Like, your boss oppressing you in your wages, all that time. I mean, I, when you get to understand it, you realize that you being oppressed, uh, to put a Bentley coupe in a parking garage.
Right, right.
Yeah. So that was, no, that was good.
Anything else?
Yeah, I, I, I also agree with that scene, that scene scripture, I, I like read Malachi for the same reason, to get it understanding, thinking the night I, it, it was just like brand new. But, uh, that scene, of course, the scripture, when I, when I look at it now, I could, you could see every avenue that they take to, to derive this, this, this money, for lack of a better word, from you. Like, those are the persons, and those are the things that they do to, to get that from you. That's what they described every living tactic.
Yeah. Yeah. Right? Now remember, remember, uh, remember also when we, when we, when we read, um, when we read, we saw, see, you gotta understand this, that's why I took time and read it, because you, you gotta see who these pharisees were, you gotta see who they were. That's why they were still operating in the temple, they were still operating as the ones who supposed to be in charge. In, in Matthew chapter twenty six, I think it is, Jesus said, the, the Pharisees and the scribes, they sit in Moses' seat. Moses was a Levite. Moses was a priest.
Right, right.
Moses' seat, he said, all whatsoever they did you that you, he observed, he observed and do, but he say, don't do after their works. He said, don't, don't do after they gave you this, don't do after their works, and so forth. That's what he saying, see, the name change, they weren't called, they weren't called, uh, riveras priests and so forth, but then they were still using the tactics to get off of the people, okay? They still was using the strategies to get off of the people. Now, in other words, why is it so difficult? Why is it so difficult to share what was freely given to you in an unfree manner?
Indeed.
Why, you try to tell me now, the, the, you supposed to have the knowledge of God on your lips, but it cause something for you to share a knowledge what ain't yours?
Wow. Seriously.
Now watch this, let me add one more, let me add one more scripture. Add one more scripture in my, in, in Matthew chapter twenty three. Matthew chapter twenty three, right? Watch this. Matthew chapter twenty three, and I'll read it here, uh, from, I read verse fourteen, it says here. Woe unto you, scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites, for ye devour, devour widows, houses.
Same thing yesterday, yeah? It was, it was we give in the widow, not taking from the widow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and then it says, for a pretense, for a pretense. That's why even the day they use these tactics, right? For a pretense, he says here. Make long prayer, you know, like, they'll come like, they'll come like, you know, like, I cover you in bread, I cover you in this, whatever, right, but that, but that, the whole deal is, is this. You, you will not have a problem, just you know. That they, you ain't got a problem with that, they was doing that long time. They was doing that long, remember they started with the sacrifices. That's why, you know, Jesus showed that he, he was already set up with them, and he came in the temple, and he saw the money changes, right? The money changes, because they were, they were exchanging, um, sacrifices for money. Okay? So, eh, eh, but I mean, this is, this is not a, this is not an exchange, you, you know, you go, we used to go to the water ski dock, water ski dock is, is known as an, as an exchange. The boat come in, and you go there, and you carry what may be valuable, and see if they run trade. That's an exchange.
Yep.
So this money changes, that's what they were doing, okay? So, and they were, they were good at devouring, uh, uh, widows' houses, huh? They were good at that, and today, I tell you this, if you look in predominantly, most of these so-called ministries, they, they strive upon the wallets of, of females.
Yeah.
Females, 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 bring all the money inside these particular places now. Females, okay? This is why, in a lot of cases, they can't, they, they can't really reveal females like that, if you, if you understand. They can't really reveal them, you know, and so forth, that's why they, they only talk. They may say things, they may say, they say things that is, that sounds more, uh, okay, it's straight across the board, yeah, yeah, that, you know, like, like a, a woman is a witch, or something like that, oh, yeah, 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 everybody gang up on her and everything like that. But then at the end of the day, you know, we can need that little thing, you know, we can need that little thing. So everybody, you know, beat up on, on, on the, on the witch type female this week, or whatsoever, right? But in terms of being in order and everything like that, no, 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 no. Plus, if women start to feel like they're not, uh, welcome, you know, however, then you mess them with the money, okay? Long time, they was doing this, okay? This ain't, this ain't, this ain't nothing new, okay? So, just wanted to show that when he was talking about tithe in the book of Malachi, the, the tithe that he said, that he says, when a man rob God, it was the priest who was robbing God. And he says, out of tithe and offering, he says, you have robbed me, even this whole nation. They robbed God and the whole nation, because you got the priest operating as mediator between God and man, the people can't go to the altar, the people couldn't go to the, into the holy, the holies. The people can do the sacrifices on the altar, that's for the Levites, they did that. But instead of offering, that which is quiet, the best, they offered the lame and the sick and everything like that. But when the people brought the good stuff, they didn't offer that, they offered the other stuff, okay? They offered other stuff, that's a no-no. Okay, that's a no-no. So, boom, I, I ended, uh, I ended right there, like I say. Let me see. Any other, any other question? Um, okay, Exodus, I think this, uh, right now. Exodus thirty five, twenty one, and also verse twenty nine. Okay, let's see what that says, Exodus. Thirty five. Okay, Exodus thirty five. Okay, let me put this back here. Put this back here, uh, okay. Okay, so. Let me, give it to the voice again, I can't see it now, because they sharing the square. Uh, that's Exodus thirty five. And, and twenty one?
Yeah, twenty one, and then I think the other was, um, twenty nine, the voice twenty nine.
Yeah, voice twenty nine. Okay, so in verse, in verse twenty one, right, and make sure this Exodus chapter thirty five, Exodus thirty five. Uh, voice twenty one, it says, and they came, and everyone who was hard stirred him up. And everyone whom his spirit made willing, they brought the Lord's offering to the work of the tabernacle of the congregation, and for all the servants, and for the holy garments, right, I mean, um, uh, when it was, it was last week when I, when I, um, I think it was, I think Jamar was on the call, uh, I think, I think Jason, I think Jason.
Yeah.
Right, we, we did, we did, uh, a session on giving. Now, giving, giving is not, when he's talking about the giving, he's talking about the free will giving. Free will giving is not, is not, um, the tithe, it's not a tithe at all, okay? Uh, because it's not a, it's not a free, it's not a free will giving, okay? But the free will giving is something totally different, and we did some sessions on that. And we showed how the people, I mean, the people, I mean, starting with the king. I mean, like, you are, the king was leading the way, would lead the way, and we use David as an example. He would lead the, the way, and given an other mindset was, everything belonged to God anyhow. That was their mindset, their mindset was, everything belongs to God. So when they give, it was easier to give, because they know what they was giving wasn't their one. But see, when you giving, and you feel like what you giving is yours, this is where the problem comes into play. And that's why, you know, you can feel that, because you, because you think it is yours, but yet, life would never show you otherwise. And then, like it says, like Job said, naked I care, enter this world, and naked I return.
Yeah.
He said, why, because I brought nothing in, and I can take nothing out, duh.
Yeah.
So.
That's a clear evidence of that.
That's the mindset of a giver, when a giver is giving, he know that he is not giving what is his. But he's giving God what belongs to God, because the earth is the Lord's and everything thereof.
Mm-hmm.
Listen, we show, we read scriptures where it shows that even when they found, when they found precious doors.
Remember that, finding the precious, they giving stuff to God.
They didn't do, they didn't play, finders keepers, losers weakos. Man, they triple, when they would find something, they would give it to God, because they didn't know, but that's going on.
Yeah.
This belong there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you find it, and then it's, or you find what is yours, no, you didn't find what is yours. You find, that's, so this was their mindset, okay? And it was, these same, uh, passages that we, we use, um, to get it started, and, and so forth, uh, you know. Uh, let me see, the last voice says, I guess he meant two, uh, twenty nine, but I read, uh, voice twenty nine. And children of Israel brought a willing offering unto the Lord, every man and woman who was hard made them willing to bring for all manner of work, which the Lord had commanded to be made by the hand of Moses, okay? So, work had to been done, and so forth, but then this was a, this was a willing effort. It was, it had nothing to do with compunction, okay? Like, I know what you got, so you gotta bring this amount or something like that, no. No, that, that's why it says, for the Lord God, for the Lord love, for the cheerful giver. This, 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 what he all this love. So if it, if it doesn't hurt you, if it doesn't hurt you to give, that's what he talking about. That, that, that's the giving right there, that's, that's the real giving, if it doesn't hurt you. People say, give till it hurts. Y'all ever hear that one? I learned that one from churches, they say, man, listen, when you give, give till it hurts. You know why? Because you thought it was yours, so all the given was in vain. All the given was in vain, because you gave till it hurt, or whatsoever, no.
Free you. Free you.
Yeah, it's supposed to please you, if you, if you giving something, it's supposed to please you. Okay? So, boom.
Yeah.